All right, good evening.
Good evening.
I call this meeting to order and I'll turn the meeting over to Mr., our interim city manager, Mr. Mike Murphy. Councilor Signer is on the way. Had some childcare issues he had to resolve, but he will be here tonight. And we'll get started. Thank you.
Okay. Head down here and their presentation to you all. Okay. So, members of council, a bit of this presentation will look similar to last Tuesday and then, you know, we have created some slides as we want to continue the discussion based on council feedback with regard to compensation. So, we'll hit the budget amendments, et cetera, hopefully be at the point of a decision tonight. So, coming out of the public forum that was held at the Key Center, staff created two different scenarios. One was to realize the 1-1-1 plan that was proposed by Ms. Galvin and then the second of those is revenue plan that is the original manager's proposal of just lodging and meals. So, since we started working on this final phase of the budget, there's two new pieces of revenue in scenario one. One is the real estate tax and the second is that the state notified us that for constitutional officers, sheriff, treasurer, commissioner of revenue, et cetera, that we were going to get an increase in our state funding to us of $63,000 plus. Total of $835,000 and so that's what we needed to balance out over on this sheet. And so, in this scenario, the 1-1-1 scenario, this is how I would propose to spend that money. The CHAP and real estate tax relief would get an additional $363,000. That's on top of the 285 that we had already programmed into the original manager's budget. $26,000 in new rent relief that was not previously proposed. This concept that 5% of the new meals tax money might go towards marketing assistance, towards city restaurants. A general fund transfer to the CIP for the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund of a million dollars. This would be a general application pool, as has been the case in the past. And then, we had some other adjustments and expenditures that are much smaller. One of the ways in which we would manage these $1.6 million worth of expenditure increases was that we also realized a real savings, a decrease in expenditures of $850,000. We got balanced with the $835,000 in revenues. For Dr. Bellamy's benefit, since you may not have had a chance to watch the work session from last week, the $850,000 that was reprogrammed for FY '20 is about how the city has previously always had a very conservative practice of, as they budget for the CIP, imagining all of the projects that were previously approved and authorized might be spent in the year that we're in and therefore hit the books in the next fiscal year. And so, in that scenario, which we have been basing all of our previous calculations on, we thought that our debt service in FY '20 would be about 970,000, 975. And we know now that our total bond sale that we're projecting for you all and bringing to the council meeting on April 15th is about 10 and a half million dollars. And it's that difference between the two and really where we had budgeted that allows us to realize the $850,000 in savings. So...
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Sorry. For the previous, thank you for the information for this slide. For the previous slide, the general fund transfer to the CIP from the CAF, will that be administered by? My mind just went...
The HAC.
HAC. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what happened. It will be administered by the HAC or will that be through us?
The HAC is, of course, you know, makes recommendations through the staff person and ultimately it's appropriated by the council in all cases. But yes, the HAC is, has a role in the process.
Yeah, I would be open to having discussion about that money, not necessarily just going through the HAC. I think there are a wide variety of issues with that, in my personal opinion. So, I'm happy that the money's in there. I'm just not completely comfortable with the HAC being the ones to decide where the funding goes.
May I make a comment or...
Sure.
Because my understanding, Councilor Bellamy, was that the HAC is purely advisory. They are not making the recommendations on or telling us how to spend the money.
But we usually just...
Go with what they say.
But we usually just vote on...
Their recommendations.
But I think that's the conversation.
Yeah, that's a separate issue, but I just want to, for the public's clarity, they don't have by law any jurisdiction over making decisions about fiscal matters.
Correct. I just wanted to be on the record of stating that I want us to have that discussion. I'm sorry if I...
I just want to, yeah, because it sounds like they have more authority than they do. We ultimately...
My brain's all like murky today. It's not coming out clear.
Well, we vote, but they do present, we've been voting on what we've been presented to.
Absolutely, but we can always disagree with them.
And that subcommittee comprises of, you know, the people and there are not many of them. Ms. Torres and I are two of them that are participating in those conversations, but anyone in that subcommittee cannot in any way be tied to being recipients of any funds. So, it narrows it down to just a few people that qualify for that, obviously, but those are the people that are, that is composed of. So, there is a separate process.
So, this scenario on the affordable housing side takes the total investment from 10.3 to 11.3 million dollars. Talked about how the $850,000 gets realized and it gets realized in both of the two scenarios. So, you know, after the public forum, we, at the mayor's request, had worked with Commissioner Divers to do two things. One was to look at moving the CHAP relief up and providing full relief up to 25,000, but creating an income scale that instead of staying at 50,000, where it is today, or going to 65, which was the original projection in the manager's budget, but only allocating 285,000 additional dollars. That we would look at this scale at $55,000 with the full relief and we have a scenario here where, you know, 946 households get impacted with the CHAP program and this, you know, is a total of 285,000 plus the 364. So, in total, just for CHAP, a million and a half dollars in grants that we estimate during FY '20/20. On the rent side, you know, I suggested to you all that, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, actually 3,300 of the people who are cost burdened in the housing needs assessment, I believe, are renters, right? So, we needed to add to that a bit. You know, this is an old program and Todd walked through it with you last time, but basically, we increased the maximum allowable rent during the course of a year from 500 a month to 1,000 a month with a, you know, a cap on that benefit and at $1,500, which is double what it is today, I believe. So, go ahead. So, scenario number two was that we don't take the real estate tax and that we look at some of the components that were added in, but then look at some of the spending in affordable housing and still add to it, but not the full million dollars. And so, that's what this scenario is. You see that we still give all of the relief that I discussed on CHAP and rent, the marketing assistance, but the new money to affordable housing is $255,000. So, instead of the 10.3 that's in the budget we've been discussing for quite some time now, 10.55. And so, Ryan, if you'd just take me to the next slide, tell you how we did that. In that scenario, you see this middle column here that says, you know, instead of that million dollars that's in scenario one would be 800,000 supplemental rental assistance would be 750 instead of 900. But I did detail for the council, Dr. Bellamy, that we discovered as we started to audit the Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program, that they have not tapped any of the FY '19 money. So, there's $945,000 that could be appropriated by council just for the next three months. So, that in combination with the 750 plus the money that is still in reserve from FY ' '18, which is all they've expended thus far, we believed would not only allow them to continue to serve the 82 families, they've told that they would get vouchers, plus the 28 that are on the waiting list, but probably others for a 24-month cycle. So, we felt solid on that. We kept solid the housing rehab at 500 and the infrastructure for Friendship Court, but we imagined that during this year that we would reduce the redevelopment allocation to Friendship Court by just under 400,000, which creates this delta of a positive 255,000 more for affordable housing in scenario two.
Sir? Sorry, Mr. Murphy. Is it possible, so I understand clearly where you're coming from, but just from my colleagues who are on the Housing Authority Board, would it be possible for us to send a memo kind of with a breakdown of what you just described? One thing I fear...
Oh, yeah.
Is that they'll see this in the paper and, oh, the rental assistance money is getting cut and that's not actually what's happening.
Yeah, I think that, you know, knowing that where we stand in fiscal year '19, three quarters of the way through and that they haven't tapped any of that money, actually it hasn't ever been asked for appropriation at the council. We're more than in good shape in that program to meet all of our needs. And I did discuss that with Mr. Duffield two Fridays ago with Ms. Kelly.
Would it be, okay, so, I guess just for either protocol or steps, do I need to discuss this with Mr. Duffield to get a memo to the board so they know? Or would you be, or Ms. Beauregard be able to do that? I know you discussed with Mr. Duffield, I just mean, I want the rest of the board to, bless you, or the rest of my Housing Authority Board members to understand clearly what it is.
Yeah, I think that one thing that Ms. Kelly and I have been talking with Mr. Duffield about in the weekly meetings we've been having with him and Mr. Norris, is that this particular program, the Supplemental Rental Assistance Program, need to come for a presentation at council. And so, we would take care of the annual appropriation then. He could update you on how many people have taken vouchers, how many people had a voucher and no longer are using it, things like that. And so, I think that we will probably deal with that either at 415 or 56. So, a much broader update is coming, but if you want a short memo or an email to the Housing Authority Board, I'm happy to do that with you.
Yes, sir, please. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ryan. Well, we'll talk about compensation in just one second. One thing I want to recap for Dr. Bellamy's benefit is that there was some discussion at the meeting that it seemed like the three counselors that were present were trending towards scenario two with some caveats. One being really primarily about the use of year-end, right? And so, the idea would be that scenario two might be approved and that the, should there be any supplement or extra funds at the year-end when we do the appropriation in December? That the $394,000 would be returned to Friendship Court for FY '20, the 150 to the rental assistance program and that the Affordable Housing Fund would actually be risen up to 1.55 million, which is a number you're familiar with from a lot of advocacy from the community. So, that, of course, calls for, you know, a very, a positive variance at year-end, right? That is, you know, what, seven and a half, nine, you know, 1.3 million dollars at least? And we had talked previously about putting possibly 1.8 towards retirement costs. So, I mean, if there is a positive variance at year-end, then we already, in theory, have talked about how the first 3.1 million dollars would be spent. Just put that out there for the record and for everybody to hear once more and kind of solidify that that's still where council is.
Yeah.
And Mr. Murphy, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I've been talking enough. Go ahead.
So, and Ms. Beauregard, can you just, and Mr. Ryan Davidson, you're not Mr. Ryan, you're not Davidson Ryan. Okay, sorry.
You're here too, Ms. Hamel. Thank you.
I drove for four hours in a car today, so I'm really, really off my game right now. So, I think if we can get some notion of what an average year-end balance has been in the last six years.
Christie can look that up.
Because I do think it's important because we do always have a year-end balance that is at least $3 million in my recollection. And I just wanted to get a sense of, it's usually been around 6 million.
We'll pull that number while we continue the discussion, if that's okay.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
But I think part of the discussion with that rationale needs to be that it's, you can't depend on...
Absolutely not, no.
...for funding and especially the major projects that we are now committing, committing to.
I think the other thing, you know, because it's always widely publicized, you know, when we get to that number at the end of the year, I just want to remind folks that when you start talking about budgets that are 188 million dollars, if we had a $3 million variance, it would be less than 2% variance, right? And it would be better that that be on the positive side than the other, right? So...
And this is no judgment on it.
Yeah.
It's just simply saying that that's what happens. It is usually 2% of the budget is usually left over.
But we also know that if there was no surplus, that at least, we know that the Friendship Court dollars are ones that we knew that could be pushed into FY '20. There would be some, some things that have to be done to fill in that in the CIP, but that that was something that is not going to be fully shovel-ready in this next, sorry, FY '21, in this next fiscal year.
Yeah, Mr. Mathon, as I've said previously in some of our public meetings, we had talked about, could he take that distribution in a different fashion should it be necessary and council approved it? And we had talked about, you know, this total, because this is basically 6 million total. Could it be 3 million in '20 and 3 million in '21? My reluctance that I've expressed to you is that's an additional 3 million that we're in the hole before we start the budget process, you know, again, seven, eight months from now for FY '21. So, and we, as much as possible, we won't want to handicap ourselves that way. 400,000, still something I don't really prefer to do, but it's possible.
What are you going to say, Ms. ... One request in regards to year-end fund or surplus that I'd like to make is if we would be able, if we could find it somewhere, if we would be able to put 500,000 to the equity fund? We've used some of those funds this year for different initiatives and we've been making commitments to equity and whatnot, but I think as different requests, whether they're one-offs or specific programs or whatever the case may be, directly dedicated towards equity, if we could look at placing funds back into that fund to keep it replenished.
We just have to have an order of priority and estimated dollar amounts associated with each of those.
Right, it all depends on what we have, but I think my priority would be to make sure that the housing fund is made whole.
It seems as if the ways, things are projected, it will be made whole. I mean, if there are additional funds.
Again, I tend to, I agree with you that we, the precedent has been that we have that kind of revenue and I, when we do, I certainly, I agree with you. I think that would be wonderful because it was, it's been nice having that flexibility in that fund.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't mind putting that on, you know...
Yeah, I don't think you're disagreeing. You're saying the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's just kind of bouncing off what the mayor was saying.
So, we have these things here and we have the retirement component.
Yes.
And then we have an equity fund in terms of order of operation.
As an order...
We'll capture those and, you know, should there be a year-end balance, then we'll ask council to prioritize them in some fashion when the time comes.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to this other question about compensation, how we got here and why. So, a question has been raised now, you know, why 4.17% and why for everybody, you know, is that the best thing to do? Is there a more strategic way to administer the funds? So, first, let's say the percentage is derived from the fact that, you know, as we have continued to progress the city's minimum wage up to $15 an hour, this last step or most recent step from 1440 to 15 is that 4.17%. And it's good, you know, this is a policy where you've really changed the environment locally and got other big employers to follow suit. There has been some impact on compression along the way and we haven't always had the dollars to address that compression. And we have yet to have, you know, the compression money or the COLA match the amount of the adjustment or the percent of the adjustment that we are going on wages each year. You know, another reason that we're at this 4.17% is, you know, as the economy continues to change, all of our peers are giving a minimum of 3% and the budget that we've talked a lot about, where we're administering the city dollars, is giving 5% to teachers and 4% to the rest of the administrators. Next, so, you know, one of the questions was, look, you said we're going to maybe be at the stage now where we're able to do pay-for-performance. And I'm sorry to say that not everybody in the organization has been evaluated, so we're not able to implement that. We clearly have to do better and all departments have that message. I think that we need to look at pay-for-performance as we come, you know, into this next year. There's no doubt about it. There is also a significant issue with market and how we can, at least in part, judge that is not just through market studies, but also in out-of-budget adjustments that we've been needing to do for a number of purposes as people continue to be reclassified, retained, market adjustments, et cetera. So, go ahead, Ryan. So, you all are aware that we had a market study. It is at this point becoming a bit dated, but one of the reasons that we can't just use the market study instead of implementing the COLA that's been suggested is we don't have enough money or in any market study to study every position. And as a matter of fact, we typically only study between, you know, 15 to, you know, a third, 33% of all the job titles in the city. So, it would be incomplete information. And so, we're talking about, is this the most fair way to do it? I can't imagine that with only knowing and a study that is now getting closer to a year or two old, what the market was, that's a struggle, you know? We use an outside consultant every year, you know, we ask the departments, what are the roles that are most critical to get analyzed? And that's what gets included along with some key benchmarks. I mean, there's, I don't, I'm not aware of any year where we have included like police officer, social worker, they're just positions that are always in demand and experience a lot of turnover. We need to know where we are at market and I think we've documented pretty well how far off we are on market, at least with police officers, with some of the stuff that's happening low, locally. So, it's difficult, you know, we wouldn't be able to just pick a particular salary level or a particular job class. It would be pretty arbitrary because market doesn't really discriminate between people who are lifeguards or department heads. It really could be that anybody is outside of market. Go ahead. So, my belief is that, you know, we have presented a scenario that because we haven't effectively dealt with compression, because the job scales and the marketplace is changing rapidly, to be competitive with people, that actually the best thing to do is to administer it across the board at this time. And for you all to really think about that our current compensation system is now 21 years old and it's a system that probably needs serious analysis at this juncture and there's a lot of departments that would like to look at that. And I'm not just talking about the fact that, you know, we've said that on the public safety side that we would analyze during this next year's step grade, but there are systems that we need to look at where we properly classify all the departments or all the positions again. But I want to be clear, we need to look at the whole picture, you know, salaries and benefits, and I mean that on the public safety side too, because it is that benefit that drives a lot of this cost, you know? Part of the challenge about saying, well, you know, can we do something different with the money is, you know, living wage has pushed us to, you know, the point where it is the base for starting firefighter, right? And so, in order for them to get moved to $15 an hour, then we would compress the fire department and we have already in this year seen what the result is when you don't move police at the same time. And so, we need to do that and when you do that, 84% of the 2.6 million dollars that I'm asking for in compensation in FY '20 are just for public safety. So, I think that what you need to do, or I would ask you to do going into this year, is look at a wholesale revision of the compensation system, a study that would clearly take at least a year. I asked Leslie to talk to the city of Lynchburg today because they had a very similar issue, 20-year-old pay scales. They needed to go out and study this and it's only after two full years of analyzing this issue that they're at an implementation within local government that's going to cost them 2.2 million dollars in adjustments. And they're not that different than us, they're slightly bigger, about 200 employees more.
And that's just phase one. There's two more phases that they haven't, don't know the cost of that yet and they don't know if they're going to, if they can even include that in their 20 budget. So, that 2.2 has already happened and that's just phase one, they said. And they're not, in case you're wondering, they're not much larger than us, but we have about 1,000 employees, they're at about 1,200. So, it's not like they have, you know, double the employees, it's only a couple of hundred more than we have, so...
And so, that's my, the reason for wanting to think through this a little bit more. Going back and, you know, looking through my notes about the living wage and how the compression was dealt with annually and some of the conversation around what COLA has been in the past year, I'm just not sure how this across-the-board increase helps us in terms of our internal issues that we have with pay. And it seems like that it could, you know, widen those gaps more. It will than they currently are. So, it just seems like we're going to be having this very same conversation, no matter what we do internally. We may get, you know, in terms of market, some of those positions may get up to that, but I think with being more strategic, we could definitely align a little bit better.
Yeah, so actually, one of the biggest problems that we have with internal pay and the current system is that there is not the appropriate amount of space in between the positions. And so, we have many situations where somebody gets a promotion and there's a question about how much you can move them because of where other people are in that class or because there's a difference in the pay that they were already receiving. And so, I think it's actually maybe the opposite, we need a system where the bands don't overlap in that same way so that when people are promoted, there is the appropriate spacing and you don't run into all these issues that you have. Somebody becomes a corporal instead of an officer and, you know, they're going to pass all the people in corporal or a sergeant, right? I mean, there are certainly examples in every department where that happens and it is in part because of the current state of the system.
Yes, which means that the individuals, this across-the-board rate, those individuals are still going, increasing at the same rate and so those gaps are essentially the same at a higher level.
Yes and no, because remember, when we've addressed compression in the past, right, we dealt with this sliver, right? We've got people who make, let's say, between 15 and 70 dollars an hour in the city or maybe more. city, or maybe more. And, you know, we only said, we're gonna make a compression adjustment from fifteen to eighteen dollars an hour, right? And so, when you only deal with that band, you know, that next band of people who make eighteen to twenty-five dollars an hour, they all got compressed, too, right? You know, I mean, we have-
No, I understand. I've been-
For all the positives of the new minimum wage for the city, and I think they are many, particularly as a policy driver, you know, when we pay, and I don't want to pick on any one position, but when we pay a lifeguard who's a teenager to sit at the pool on the stand for two and a half months in the summer, the same thing that we start firefighters at, we run into a problem, right? And that's, that is one of the policy outcomes of the new minimum wage. And so, that does have an impact, then, on all of firefighters and police officers and all the way along the line, which drives eighty-plus percent of all of our personnel costs.
I have a question. I apologize that I was late. We clearly, we have to do better work on some administrative work between our chief of staff and staff, because I was looking through my emails. I can't find a poll about this, and this is the one night a week that I have a fixed conflict that's been on my calendar for a long time. My wife teaches at UVA from six to eight, six to eight-thirty, and that's just been on my calendar the whole spring. So we had a lot of trouble getting a sitter who could come, so I'm sorry. I, so my question would be, with the Lynchburg example, is it possible, was there any downward adjustment of salaries that happened after the study? Because I think the concern that a lot of people would have is that once you go up across the board for, that then that creates a baseline floor for all of these salaries, an automatic increase, then you can't adjust downwards. So it's basically created an inflationary, you know, pressure in the whole budget for the future councils.
I can't answer with regard to Lynchburg. I could tell you what happened here. When we did this twenty years ago, is if somebody was classified in a way where they were at the top of scale, they were no longer eligible for a general wage increase that affected their permanent pay and retirement. They received those dollars as a one-time bonus, but it did not change their pay ever again.
So they have only implemented one phase of this, and that first phase targeted employees that needed to get to market minimum, okay? So not every employee received an adjustment. And then, if department heads needed, for some reason, other employees to receive an adjustment, they would put in a request, and that would be approved or denied. But I don't think anybody got less pay, but not everybody got something at that phase. I don't know what the future phases look like. I haven't seen their final report, and they're still working through all that, but that was at least the first phase.
Because I think that what, you know, in the private sector, certainly, I think that one way of slicing this would be, you would say, management level, some tier of employees, it would not be automatic for, and that's where you would do some, and you're talking about employees who probably make six figures, but to have, there'd be some element worked in there, and I think that's why I was interested in having this discussion, although it doesn't sound like it's gonna go. But, but it's a substantial increase. I mean, if you make a hundred thousand dollars a year, it's a four thousand dollar automatic increase. And it's, it's different if you're at a management level in an organization than if you're at, you know, a more rank-and-file level. It just is, it's, it's a substantial increase to have be automatic, no matter what the other, even understanding the other compression concerns at the highest levels of the pay scales. That's, that's, I think, why I was interested in the discussion.
I would want you to know that, you know, I know that, you know, we've talked about in here, kind of, area median income. The mayor talks about that's at eighty-nine-six. You know, we do that for our housing. Was it ninety-three point six percent of all of our employees are below that, at or below that number?
What is that number?
Eighty-nine-six. And so, we're not talking about impacting a lot of people who are above the number that you're talking about. And when it comes to market, there's nothing that says that there's people who have higher salaries are at market. I think that actually, the market study we have proves otherwise. And, you know, I'm more about the facts and figures, but, you know, from a kind of more emotional appeal, I would say morale-wise, you know, to really target only certain groups, or for us to have talked about this now for three-plus months at this level and talk about on the last day not implementing it, I think that is an issue for employees. I know that, in general, the thousand employees don't know every intricacy of the budget. What they probably know is, we're talking about spending a lot of money on housing, that they're not gonna have to pay more for their health care, and that they think they're gonna get four percent raises. It's never, it's never a sure thing, right? It's the council's purview until the process is over. And I would just say that, in future years, if there's gonna be talk about, you know, the proposal, because this proposal actually predates, you know, my March fourth presentation. It goes back to talking with you all about public safety raises in December and January. That's how long this number's been public. I would hope that we would clarify much more quickly in the process that, you know, maybe that's not the right strategy.
So I think, so with the plan of approving the money that's been set aside in the budget with, you know, the directive to staff to come back to us by June with a plan that is, when you're talking about equity, we could still impact employees' pay by July one. So what you're saying is that we couldn't possibly get a more strategic, I mean, I started looking at salaries and the, the impact of the four percent, and just with the lead team, that's almost a hundred thousand dollars, I think, is seventeen people with the four point one seven percent across the board. That's without knowing, you know, being given the information of whether, where our lead team is every, because even looking at some of those salaries, I had some questions about why some people earn based on, you know, being able to look at another department and what those salaries look like. So even looking at that strategically, to see if people within, you know, department levels are being paid appropriately, how were their salaries decided, and is that something that we need to look at versus, you know, across the board? The level under them, the level under that. I know even, you know, conversations that I've heard for years, how there hasn't really been, it seems like, a process that's kind of streamlined. It's really up to, you know, people to decide within the range what people are offered for employment. So if there are individuals, even at manager-director levels, who feel like, and department heads could give us that information, right? It still could be a more strategic process than the across-the-board implementation.
I guess my argument to the contrary would be that, you know, there's a certain amount of pay that I believe everybody deserves as a cost of living adjustment, that-
But we haven't done four percent in the, so this isn't like it's something, I mean, could you give us the, what the COLA has been maybe for the last five years?
Two or three.
Two or three.
You know, and that's what our peers are doing in the year we're in.
And the county is actually doing a two point three percent COLA across the board, and then they're doing that point seven percent performance.
That's correct, yeah.
So, that is different.
It is. But they also have a more sophisticated system by which they're making the decision. And so, you know, I would say, if you want a different plan from me in just two months' time, knowing that a professional outside firm in another locality took over a year of surveying to do it, what should I base that on? The market study is adequate for me to make that decision. I'd be basing it on medians, maybe, of ranges that are not necessarily accurate for all of the employees. And quite honestly, you know, regardless of how you slice and dice that, whether it's three plus a one point one seven, or two and a half plus a one point six seven, I would think that, absent any of part of that equation also being people's performance, where I don't have a score on everybody, it presents some difficulty for me. What is the more fair, more equitable way that you imagine that I can give the money at this time than what we're suggesting, knowing that by and large, you know, there's very few places you can find that we're at market? Really, I just, you know, if we look at the city and where people leave to, it is almost always laterally for more money, including next door to Almarle County. And in great numbers in the police department, unfortunately. And there's only so much money for me to redistribute if really, if we're gonna move to fifteen, that drives fire, that drives police. I'm only operating with sixteen percent of the money at that point. So if you want me, for the other seven hundred employees to slice and dice, you know, three, four hundred thousand dollars, that doesn't seem right.
I mean, where I am, I just, I remember when I was running for office, having the conversation with then-manager Jones, I just couldn't believe that we weren't in a position where we have a performance management system. So for me, I really want our energy as a council and as, as, as a city to be focused on how do we more quickly get to a comprehensive compensation system that can be more equitable, and it's really looking at how people are performing relative to how then they're going to be compensated. Because I agree, I would love something more strategic. I just think that right now, we're kind of locked in, and I can see that we don't have, I don't feel like we have the tools in place to be more strategic in this timeframe, but I want us, certainly, I want to feel empowered, like, what do we need to do? What resources do we need to discuss allocating to get us to a point where we can look at this comprehensively and start to get this in action? Because I don't want to find ourselves in this exact same conversation next year.
I do have a clarifying question. So is it fair to say that, that of the four point one seven increase, and we assume that it's like this three percent is, actually would have been a normal COLA, but the compression issue is about the one point one seven percent? Is that pretty fair to say? That what you're doing is trying to deal with both?
So because the COLA is the same as the increase in the living wage, then you're eliminating the compression, basically? So it keeps everything the same spread. So what we've done before is the living wage increase has been more than the COLA, which has created the compression to occur. So this, again, as Mr. Murphy mentioned earlier, is that same percentage, which is why we wanted to do that same percentage for that reason, because it's very hard to deal with compression. You don't, where do you stop? And it's difficult to project the cost for that, and there's a lot of issues with doing that. So this seems like the much cleaner way to do that is to just provide that across-the-board increase that equaled the same increase as the living wage, the fourteen forty to the fifteen.
I just want to illustrate for you, and, you know, usually I do all the math in my head, but I want to be right. So when we went last year from thirteen seventy-nine to fourteen forty, which was the last jump, it was an increase on the minimum wage of, sorry, the whispering didn't quite get to them.
Yeah, but there's still a difference between increasing pay sixty cent and increasing pay at the top levels, you know, six thousand dollars. There's still a, that's still a major difference. I mean, it's not my area of expertise, but it just makes sense that it's a difference. And even going back and listen-
You're comparing sixty cents to six thousand dollars? But that's an hourly rate, not an annual rate. I just want to make sure that we're comparing annual pay to annual pay.
And so, even with that equates, that's a couple, what, like a, what is it?
It's five times. It's twelve hundred dollars versus six thousand.
That's if you are, that's assuming that you're working forty hours, which is not the case for people at that, most of the people at that pay scale that will absorb that increase.
I don't think so.
Okay, so.
So, help me understand, Mayor Walker, because I've just been trying to listen and decipher it all. Where do we go from here, in your opinion?
I don't know, I'm not the, that's what I was asking for from staff.
I know.
But I hear what he's saying in terms of what we haven't done. Even the studies that are done annually or biannually, it seems like we could extract enough information out of those, or just trusting what our department heads give us in terms of, they look at their pay structures within the departments and be able to recommend where they have the most needs. But if it can't be done, I just feel like there is a way that it could be, but-
I would say that the, the true detailed equitable plan would cost many factors of two point six million dollars, right? You know, I mean, part of the issue is, I can't, you know, when you recognize what the general amount is being administered in the marketplace, plus trying to balance out those other factors, I mean, we're talking about, you're saying, let's do that within the amount of money that we've already got programmed in, when I'm sure that it would cost double that easily.
Yeah, so I agree with that it is gonna cost a lot.
Okay.
Just, Mayor Walker, and I don't know if we're making comments, but I would just like to offer that I, I really do believe we need to make a thorough investigation, review of the, of the compensation. As you said, it was done twenty-one years ago, or was established twenty-one years ago. Many of us have been talking about this for many years, and it's finally getting to the point where it's, something's gotta change. We are gonna get a new city, permanent city manager. This is like something, first item on the work plan, that we need to get this done. We need to really do it fairly and comprehensively. And it needs to be as thorough as what seems to be, we have examples of like in Lynchburg. So, and at that point, then we won't be making these kind of shots in the dark about whether or not we're being fair or not. I really don't think it's something at this point, without, without any kind of a performance evaluation. When I read those employee surveys, and there hadn't been evaluations done on a consistent basis, I have a, I don't have confidence that you can just assume that every department can make these decisions about who gets a raise and who doesn't. So we need a real ironclad system that can stand any kind of challenge by anybody, if they didn't get the raise they think they deserved, and then it's something that's very objective. And then we can make these kinds of sort, you know, more surgical adjustments. But other than that, I do think that, that it's important to get that data down, and that, that perspective and peer review.
So is that something that we can start the process on, put in an, do we have to do an RFP?
Initiating a request for proposals?
I actually have a call next week. Kevin Roddy was here earlier this week with our financial advisor, and they actually offered the service, too. So we were talking about this, and he's gonna, we have a call next week. So there's a few avenues we can look at, start looking at.
There are a few issues that I think are more critical to the organization, so I'm inclined to say yes. However, I do want to also acknowledge that, you know, we should have a discussion about how that matches up with the rest of what you got in your efficiency study about the human resources. You know, a conversation I'll have with you soon about the results of the equity group, and, you know, you know, how those may all match up together.
I had a statement, but I forgot what it was.
I guess what kind of timeline do you think that some of those things will be kind of coming together in a way that-
Oh, yeah, I remember. So, how do we make sure that we're not having the same conversation the next budget cycle, if that is the only thing that's going to prevent us from having the same conversation next budget cycle, if we don't do it?
Well, I think that, you know, we'd have to set a goal that we're having this discussion and making a decision in the next ninety days about whether, you know, you're gonna go out to bid for this, understanding that it will take some time. You know, you may not be able to implement in twenty-one, but we may be able to approach this differently. And one way that it can be different is, I can assure you that we can enforce within departments that there'll be an employee evaluation for every employee, and at the very least, we could be talking about performance-based pay in the next cycle.
Lynchburg took a couple budget cycles to actually put funding aside. That's where the two point two million that came out of a couple of years. So if nothing else for twenty-one, we should start doing that, even if a study could not fully inform the budget. And then we could do some things-
It's more of your year-end money that, you know, we don't know if we have.
Right, so.
But we will be in a position to have, like, we're at the point now where we're ensuring, ensuring that every department is, is doing performance evaluations. So you're saying that by next year's cycle, even if we don't have this new system in place, we'll at least have, have that differentiator that we can look at by each employee?
I can't conceive of any reason- I can't conceive of any reason that every person in the calendar year that we're in could not get an employee evaluation. No, that would not be acceptable.
Thank you. And that, there then would be a personnel policy about pay and, and evaluation. And that policy currently doesn't exist. It's only steps. Or does, am I right or wrong? Am I misunderstanding that?
I think that there was a, you know, a, a request that wasn't receiving enough follow-up.
Okay.
I think, just to pile on here, another thing that I think would be helpful would be data about competition and loss. Some of this is very anecdotal, I mean, no, no offense, but the way that you just described how we lose candidate, you know, staff to other jurisdictions, very anecdotal, whereas the police, that was empirical. We, we had, we had a lot of data. And I have questions about how widespread this really is. How, how many senior staff have we lost to other jurisdictions become where pay has been, you know, or to the county? I mean, I would like to, that should be easily producible, and it should be a highly relevant variable, I would think, as we, you know, look and target this whole thing. And maybe that really only at management levels, or maybe that really did, maybe they need 360, you know, more sweeping, multi-peer reviews at certain levels, and that you can do a more automatic one at lower levels. Organizations do this all the time, and it would depend on what, on what we're actually, what, what we're dealing with across the board. Like, we knew that in the police, we really had an alarming situation in part because the police chief brought it to us and really advocated and had statistics about it.
And it's not just necessarily who you lose, but who you can't bring in as well?
Well, but I would like to know that. I mean, that, that would be an empirical thing. I mean, how many, how many job openings have we had unfilled? What, for what duration have we got? I mean, that, that should be something that would be pretty easily...
Is this something that could be written into the scope of an RFP?
Traffic engineer, or, or assistant traffic engineer.
Well, but traffic engineer, but, but if you talk anecdotal...
Where the average duration has been, you know...
But there were a lot of reasons for that, I can imagine, in the past, knowing some of what went into that.
There are a few, yeah.
Right.
So, yeah, and Ms. Burregard said that all these important considerations are part of the scope of an RFP.
Sure, yeah. Oh, that they would also do the analysis as well as the system?
Yes, good analysis, good review of what policies were missing.
Yes, we would go through years of retention data, you know, you know, we could document, you know, the mid-year adjustments over several years and understand why they happened. Many of the people who stayed, we had to adjust their pay to get them to stay.
But I agree, we should, Mayor Walker, we should get this out quick, because some of these RFPs, like, they took, I mean, it's taken a long time. So we want to set the next councilor right to be able to make decisions.
So I, I guess I want to make sure that I understand where we are, because as we head into the readings for Monday night, and a potential approval of what is your budget as of Monday night, and on the 8th, that the budget in scenario two, with the potential prioritization of some year-end funds and compensation as proposed, is where the council is and what will be voted on for Monday?
Uh huh, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So with that said, we've got, you know, the first, we've got the second public hearing on Monday, so we'll be taking comment, of course, after I'm done here, and again on Monday night. And then on 2:00 PM on the 8th, we will have a meeting, which is traditionally a very short meeting, for your final approval. Monday night agenda, just, you know, so that we revisit, will not only be the public hearing, but also the reading of the tax levy, et cetera. Okay?
I think that I should say, just because you, you seem to ask all of council all the way throughout, I have not been comfortable with supporting any increased revenue other than that that would come through lodging and cigarette tax. I've been consistent about that from the very beginning. So that's where I'm planning on making my decisions from, but it doesn't seem that there's been a, a majority for that position. But that's where, I, I haven't changed from that position on revenue.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank staff again for, for going through the, the analysis of, of your bond issuance and sequence and finding the savings that basically gave us $78,000 more than a, than a 1 cent increase on the real estate tax would do. That was extremely valuable. And I think for many of us, after listening to the testimony at the last public hearing, and many, many conversations offline, the, the, the public is very burdened already by the real estate taxes that they received, like, basically a 7 cent increase already by virtue of the inflation of our land values. And so one thing that I would like us to really work hard on this next year as well is what, finding whatever tools we can find to make our real estate taxes more progressive, so that we can raise taxes but not hurt people that are of the lower income levels. That, that's just something that I want to thank staff for. But at this point, when, when there's basically 7 cent increase on the real estate tax because of inflation, that, I'm glad that we were able to find savings elsewhere. And I guess my understanding too is that this is a practice that's still very conservative, but is something that we can engage in every year from now on, so that we're not, we're not missing these revenues or these savings.
That's right, because we already start out in a place where we don't sell bonds on anything, that we aren't ready to go out and do the work and spend the money in the next 24 months. So we're being conservative still, not ultra-conservative, which has been really what the difference between that $37 million and the $10 and 1/2 is.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you also.
So we'll open, open it up for public comment. So if you just come up to the mic and state your name, address, if you're comfortable with that, and... Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Bravo. I live in Charlottesville at 1135 Locust Avenue, and I'm here representing Impact along with my two colleagues here. As you know, we're working on the issue of affordable housing, and as you know, we've been working very hard to try to keep money in the calf, and that we've been working hard for the 1.5 million. What I'd like to share with you very briefly is something that we just learned yesterday. Charlottesville is about to lose 46 affordable housing units at Belmont Apartments, 1,000 Monticello Road, built in 1973 and most recently sold on February 1st for 2.75 million. Some of the tenants were paying only $500 to $600 in rent, so this was among the most affordable housing in the area. We learned that the tenants, mostly low-income seniors, were notified on March 5th that they had to be out by May 5th, and will have their deposits returned to them 30 to 45 days following their vacating their apartments. We can only surmise that the rent will be significantly higher following the renovations. When, when AIM asked about rent increases following renovations, they were informed that the unit rents are grossly under market rate in their current condition and before renovation. So we're just presenting this to let you know that it just keeps getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we know who own this property?
Yeah, I would, I would like to know more about this.
Okay, yeah.
Hi, Walt Teinecke, city resident. Tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition. We want to commend the council on its progress in this year's budget proposal and your demonstrated commitment to affordable housing. Thank you for all your hard work on this endeavor to date so far. We write, and we, we will be writing, but we want to ask you today to stay true to your commitment to making amends for historic housing discrimination by increasing revenue to invest in long-term and affordable, in a long-term way in affordable housing. We understand that the city manager was able to find additional funds added to the budget, the $800,000 that was referred to today. And we encourage you to use these funds to deepen your investment in affordable housing. We urge you not to retreat from your original effort to increase taxes in a 1-1-1 formula as a result of these funds, but rather to commit these additional funds to, one, expand the tax relief fund to provide full relief to homeowners with incomes at, at or below $30,000, and to expand the remainder of the sliding scale up to $65,000. To increase, second, to increase the Charlottesville rent subsidy voucher program, and third, to increase the Affordable Housing Fund to 1.55 million. We encourage you to commit these funds in addition to the investments you've already made in CRHA, PHA, and AHIT. A tax increase today is an investment in the future of affordable housing and a commitment to equity in Charlottesville that will be long-lasting. Remember what your own hack has told you, that this is a 15-year project to get affordable housing crisis solved. It's going to take about $10 million a year for 15 years. So this 1% increase in the real estate tax is an important way of setting the, to setting the stage for a consistent and persistent commitment to solving that problem over 15 years. We urge the council not to be shortsighted in balancing the budget this year to the detriment of future needs. Fund affordable housing to meet the incredible need to stop displacement in our city today and for future generations. So we really hope that this, that this $800,000 sort of windfall, which is a one-time windfall, won't take the wind out of your sails of increasing the real estate by 1 cent. It's important for us, we all know, and I think you know really clearly because of the assessment increases, that there's going to be a pass-through to renters. So what you have, I think, in the affordable, in, in assistance for, for renters is not enough as well. And adding that $800,000 to that kind of support would, I think, increase the impact that you're having in terms of equity in this town. Remember, this is over 200 years' worth of history here. This is redlining, this is housing covenants, this is other ways that people have been discriminated against for a long, long time. And this is our opportunity to make a long-term commitment. So please don't see this $800,000 windfall as something you can just sort of, you know, use as an excuse to get rid of the 1%, 1 cent increase in the real estate tax. Please see this as a long-term commitment. Next year, we're going to have the same conversations. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? All right, any comment, council or staff? Everybody's like, no.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
And this has been an intense budget season, so yeah, we really appreciate, you know...
Thank you for all your hard work.
I feel, I really, I mean, all of the years I've sat through and just watching this from the outside, and there's just been a lot of great community involvement. I mean, obviously, people bring different perspectives, but I've just really been encouraged by just, you know, the number of folks that awayed, not a lot of them necessarily in this room, but, you know, even through emails and all the way, you know, kept talking to you on the street.
Everyone, yes. All right, we'll meet in adjournment. Thank you.